To order, and if we could all please rise, the Honorable Councilmember Brandon McCullough will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to the 1,934th Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, December 13, 2021. Would our Deputy Clerk, Ms. Miller, please take the roll?
Sure. Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
President McIntyre?
Here, and we have all members of the council with us this evening. At this time, we have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,933rd Regular Meeting of the City Council that was held on November 22, 2021.
Move for approval?
Support.
Any comments, corrections to the minutes? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
And President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved without amendment. At this time, we go to the council if anyone has any announcements, tributes, or recognitions they'd like to make.
Madam Chair?
Uh, Councilmember White?
Yes, if we could have a moment of silence for the victims of the Oxford shooting.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, I'd like to wish our Deputy Clerk a happy birthday. She should probably be a little mindful of who her friends are because Ms. Nash gave her the present of being with us tonight.
I would rather be no place else, thank you. Thank you for having me.
I think my trust level, and you just went down a little bit. But, happy birthday.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yes, happy birthday.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes.
Um, in the city this weekend, I believe, we are having a tree lighting and a parade, and if others would jump in on the details of that, I was trying to figure it out on my calendar, I believe Sunday is a parade, is that correct?
Yes.
The fourth, and, um...
At 4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM, yeah, as well. We have to line up a little bit earlier, but I, I'm real anxious to see some of the costumes that I've heard our new president and some of the others in the room here on, on this little half-circle here will be wearing, so I think Livonia should watch out, here they come. Yes?
Absolutely, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I have several. First is on the serious side, we have new data for item number 11, and Councilmember Jolly already wished our Deputy Clerk a very happy birthday, and we really do thank you for being here tonight, and that's duty to choose us over a birthday party, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
On a more lighthearted note, congratulations to the Michigan Wolverines who did what no one thought Jim Harbaugh could ever do, and that is to beat Ohio State.
Who's no one? Anyway, he's gone.
Few thought would ever happen in the Jim Harbaugh era, so congratulations to Wolverine Nation, and congratulations to the Michigan State Spartans on defeating Penn State on a very cold, and I know it was cold in Ann Arbor as well, on Saturday, and they went 10-2, only a handful of Spartan teams have done that, they had a perfect season at home, and this, I believe, earlier this week, Coach Tucker was named Big Ten Coach of the Year, and they are headed to a bowl game, which means that our youngest son, Patrick Colleton, is a freshman and member of the marching band, will also be headed to a bowl game, so we're happy for all of the great athletic accomplishments of Michigan, our two largest Michigan schools. And also, back on a serious note, Councilmember White mentioned the tragedy yesterday in Oxford, and just a terrible thing, and there are really no words. I did invite the Superintendent Andrea Oquist to join us tonight to talk about the district's communication with parents, she, she said that she appreciated the invitation, unfortunately had a prior commitment. The district sent a letter out, I believe, or communication to all parents, she said it was on the homepage also of the, of the school, of the LPS page, I can't find that, but I'm going to ask that on our Facebook and the commi, or our Livonia in the Community page, that we maybe find and publish the link to that, because it has resources for parents, Sarah, you've got it, thank you. It's got resources to parents, a message about what we do in our schools, but, you know, certainly what they are, the steps we take in our Livonia Public Schools are of probably most interest to the people with, with kids in Livonia Public Schools, but I believe that there are resources and talking points and other helpful information in that communication that, that may be useful to people who even don't have children in the district, so we'll be getting that up. So I'm sure it's on the school board Facebook page, we'll get it up, or the school district will get it up on our page as well, I'd like to request that. Councilmember Toy?
Madam Chair, to your excellent point, I would like to see us, perhaps not this month, but in the new year, the Liaison Committee of Schools to put that, as a resolution, into, into that committee, I think it behooves us as a city to know what our schools are doing as elected leaders, and also what our City Hall does in case of, of an emergency as well. So I'd like both those groups, if we could, to come in and, you know, put that in that committee.
Are you asking?
I am.
To, to, so that is the Committee on, our education?
Yes.
Education and Law, I would leave.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So this is the matter of referring to the Committee on Education and Law, the issue of our liaison work with our, our school district and our safety protocols here at, here at City Hall. Any other comments?
Yeah, just to invite, you know, some of their leadership in, maybe the Superintendent, any of the board members, whatever, or their safety people, and of course ours as well. I know when I was treasurer, there was a lot of questions about what happens if somebody were to hold us up in that department, or the clerk's office that's on the first floor, you know, all those kinds of things that in this day and age probably are more relevant than they were then, so educating us.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Donavick, did you?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the audience? All right, we can then could take the vote on referring that item to the Committee on Education and Law.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
And President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries, so we will be referring that matter to committee, thank you, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you.
At this time, we go to the audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to communicate with the City Council on any item, not in this evening's agenda. Now is your opportunity to do so, we invite you to the podium, and we ask for your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Denha, my address is 700 North Old Woodward, Suite 300, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. I thought it was incumbent upon me to come and, and thank you, all the city. I am the managing member and owner of the Mid Seven Shopping Center located on the corner of 7 and Middle Belt, it's anchored by the Pet Supplies Plus and Planet Fitness, I've owned it for six or seven years. I came in front of the city with the leadership of Mark Taramina and my architect, Ben Tissio, who you guys may know, based in Livonia, and we needed to reinvent the center, and that was probably September, October, and looking at my notes today of 2020, and I, I thought, you know, you guys need to hear a story of, you know, I do developments all over the city, all over, excuse me, southeast Michigan, but, you know, this is a property I've owned for a while, as you know, I've remodeled it, and to cut to the chase, you know, we had trouble leasing, it was probably about 15,000 feet vacant, and coming to you guys, with the city, between the city council and your sister boards, we came up with a great plan that benefited both parties, both parties being obviously myself, but obviously the city, the residents, and the tenants of my center, and I went through additional drive-through, I know some of you guys, most of you were on the council at the time when I petitioned, I think there's some new faces, so forgive me, but at the end of the day, what this city and the commit, the city council and the boards need to know is, there was a collective working, positive outcome here, where I, I got approved for a drive-through, I got approved for an outlot, and as we sit here today, you know, I signed a new 10-year lease with Big B Coffee on the drive-through, great operator Bob Perry, who's the master developer in Wayne County, he also has his location at 7 and Farmington, I'm at lease with a 10,000 square foot tenant, hopefully done in the next month, I'll disclose it at the right time, and we have the outlot left. So, you know, I've dealt with cities all my life, and you guys need to hear how good it was. Mark, I can't thank you enough, you did a phenomenal job working with me, so I think it was a win-win. Not only did we get, you know, what, what we wanted, but we got approved property, rehab the back, so, you know, sometimes you guys only hear the bad, you guys gotta hear the good. So, I wanted to take my time to come out and acknowledge that, I thought it was important, it's a small community, we all know each other, you know, we all do developments around town, but you guys got a great leader in Mark, Ben Tissio, architect in Livonia, was phenomenal, and I thank all you guys. So, you'll see some full center hopefully by May or June when they open, and we'll be good.
Thank you, Mr. Denha, and I don't know if others wish to speak too, but I'll thank you for taking the time, and again, we hear from petitioners when they're here to ask for something, and we hear when people aren't happy, and it's lovely that you took time, and we know you're extremely busy, you have a family and business obligations, to take the time to come here tonight and share with us and share with the public the success story, and we are just thrilled that you decided to reinvest in Livonia, property that needed it, we appreciate your confidence in the city, we appreciate your partnership, we, there are lots of great architects, we're always happy when a Livonia architect has a chance to work on the project, and you, you couldn't speak any truer words about Mr. Taramina, and he's Livonia's ace in the...
But I did not pay him to show up.
But Mark does a phenomenal job, and everybody in this city benefits from, from it, but thank you, it was very, very nice of you to come.
It was important to me, and you guys need to know that, and I thank you guys for your time, and have a good holiday, is there any questions?
Councilmember Jolly?
Yeah, so I absolutely echo everything the Council President said, thank you. The one thing that came up in regards to this plaza, I'm thrilled that everything has worked out the way it has. The one aspect of this that I was excited about, because you are using that back alley now as a drive-through, I believe you through Mr. Tissio gave maybe a soft approval to pursue some sort of mural on that wall there, and kind of break it up and kind of add some sort of artistic feature. You know, you, you have all of your approvals, there's no reason that we can hold you to do this at this point, I would really love it if you continued to pursue that through the ZBA and actually put something into action back there.
It's gonna get done, let me just get the weather, we just, we just poured asphalt by the, right under the wire last week, so it'll get done in the spring.
Okay, because, and I appreciate that, I, I trust that you're gonna do that, we're kind of giving you the opportunity to do this first in Livonia and kind of bring in some artistic flair, so if it works out, it would be wonderful.
I'm gonna leave it up to Ben, because I don't have good taste for that stuff. So you'll have it, he'll reach out to you, he's, he's working on a lot of the stuff for me in other cities, yeah, it'll get done.
Thank you, sir.
Just let me get the weather, and we'll get to the spring.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Don, uh, McCullough and then Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, these are great stories, I remember when Mr. Tissio, we met out there, because we were reluctant on that back driveway being, you know, being the means of the drive-through for the, what you're now saying Big B, but as Livonia has been a built-out city for such, so many years, I remember that this can be the innovative factor to show how we redevelop ourselves, so kudos to you, we appreciate, I mean, getting good news up here at the podium is always a good thing, so really looking forward to you guys being the innovative factor, the trailblazing, kind of the redevelopment of some of these much-needed blighted areas, especially across the street, maybe it'll spur some stuff where the old Sears used to be, so...
Well, to your point, and I won't, I won't go too deep, but you guys as a city have acknowledged how to pivot, there, listen, there's no easy deals anymore, so, you know, whether it be the parking ratios, whether it be some rezoning that makes sense, so you guys are ahead of the curve too, so it helps, some, some cities are very behind the curve on that.
Absolutely, and helping, you know, helping that spurs the economic development, so we appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick?
Thanks, Madam President, Mr. Denha, thanks for being here tonight, to your point, real estate market is very tough right now, properties are either too expensive, or they're too expensive to rehab and bring back to life, but you've been figuring out a way to do that, and I thank you for your investment in the community, and thanks for doing what you're doing, and also to Mr. Jolly's point, I think he'd be most happy if you just put a mural of him on the back of the wall, so I think that's a good idea, I think it gets some approvals there, so congratulations again, and wish you, wish you the best in the future.
Listen, you gotta, and you guys know this, you have to spend money on your assets to, to keep them full, we did that a few years ago, but we needed some more help, and you guys came calling, so it was a good marriage, and we continue, we hope to continue the relationship, and we will.
Thank you again, Mr. Denha, and I think on behalf of all of us in the city, we wish you and your family a very happy holiday season, and your businesses continue success, and keep investing in Livonia, please, but thank you again, it means a lot that you were here tonight.
Thanks for the time, everybody, happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, then we will move ahead, if there's no one else who wishes to address the council, then we will move ahead. We do not have, we do not have any reports from any, the mayor or any other city officials this evening, so we'll move ahead with our consent agenda, this evening, items 1 through 8 are listed on the consent agenda, they're voted on as one item, it doesn't mean that they are any less important than any other item on the agenda, but whether they were determined not to be controversial in nature when we reviewed them at our November 22 study meeting. Anyone from the audience have any comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none?
I'll have your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, that would be helpful, wouldn't it?
It's all right, it's very...
We have, uh, White and Toy. Anyone from the audience have any comments? All right, seeing none, now we can, if you would please, Ms. Miller, take the vote on approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved unanimously by all seven members of councils who are with us this evening. And with that, we move ahead to unfinished business, beginning with a proposed amendment, item number nine is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended, this comes to us from the Department of Law to repeal Chapter 10, Department of the Office of the City Council of Title II Administration and Personnel and amend section 080, City Clerk duties of Chapter 04, City Council of Title II Administration and Personnel to abolish the current administrative position in a standalone department and create an identical administrative position under the direction and supervision of the City Clerk.
Madam President?
Before I go to you, I just wanted to clarify something, it was pointed out that in the meeting, in our, in our study session, it was not explicitly said that the position of the ZBA administrator, which is now held by Ms. Marilyn Mutzy, would be moving with the position of the manager of the City Council Office. It, it, it automatically goes because that position reports directly to Ms. Casper, which the manager of the City Council Office, but I just wanted to clarify, there were some questions asked about why that wasn't moving, it is moving, so, thank you.
Be happy to offer first reading.
All right, Councilmember Barr has offered first reading on that. All right, item number 10 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances is amended, this comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Chapter 5.42, Section 010, definitions to comport with Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, council.
Madam President?
Vice President Barr?
Offer first reading on this as well?
All right, Vice President Barr has offered first reading. Item number 11 is a request to authorize appropriation expenditure, this comes to us from the Department of Public Works for the emergency repair and restoration of underground electrical service to fire station number one, the headquarters, from budgeted funds, and I would like to, I mentioned that we have new data on this item, it is respectfully suggested that an itemized invoice received from the Department of Public Works on November 30, 2021, as requested by the council at the study meeting that was held on November 22, 2021, with respect to this item be received and placed on file for the information of the council.
So move.
I will second this for discussion purposes only.
All right. You've got that, Lori? Okay. All right, Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to hear from the administration in regards to the items that were brought up during the study meeting regarding this item, I see one of our leaders from DPW out there. Just to rehash what was expressed during the last meeting, we got this invoice for an emergency repair, the thing that was concerning to me is the overall price for this comes in at, I think, I believe, just about $86,000, and noticeably, the amount of hours billed out for this job was 334 and change hours of labor in regards to this project. We have received new data, kind of further detailing the job in general, I'm still significantly struggling with the amount of hours being billed out for this job, do you have any kind of clarification for that, because as of right now, I, this is kind of tough to swallow, to be honest.
Yeah, thank you, good evening, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director, Public Works for the City of Livonia. Yeah, unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting to hear all of your comments and what was asked, I did get the information from Doug that was forwarded on to the electrical contractor at RCI, Frank Struble, he did provide the estimate that was sent over to you, as long as, as well as some additional information in an email to me, specifically to Councilman Jolly's question on the number of hours, I don't specifically have a direct answer, I'm flipping through his, his notes that he sent to me, that would indicate the total number of staff that was on the project, or timeframe that was involved completely. I do see that, in this bullet point here, I'm trying to read through the notes real quick, so they started, the start, the work started back on August 27 of 2021, where some temporary repairs were done, and they got half-power going, and some generator work started up at the, at the fire station to keep them somewhat operational, when DD came out after they had the mistig stuff done, and put together a plan of what needed to be done for the permanent repairs, that was started on September 1, they began ordering material, so they, so the estimate was prepared on September 1, began ordering materials, got approval for the estimate from DPW, and then execution began the second week of September, so work was completed around October 8, so about three weeks of work is what it took them to complete that. I apologize for the long answer, I'm trying to get up to speed on some of this stuff myself, too.
Madam President, please. So, if we divide the amount, it's 371 hours billed out, if we divide that by eights, which would be a standard workday, that gives us a little bit more than 46 total workdays to perform this job. I, I appreciate the clarification that you're providing, it, it doesn't add up still, in my perspective, I mean, it's, it's, it's not, and I mean, I, you know, we're in a position where we have to provide extra scrutiny for a case like this, that unfortunately, however you want to phrase it, it's coming in the back door, because it wasn't reviewed ahead of time, it wasn't given that scrutiny ahead of time, so this is the, the time for doing that, and I just, I, I struggle to see 371 hours, even if it lasted three weeks, so, I mean, you're saying they had a crew out there consistently for three weeks of what?
Yeah, that...
Five or more workers?
Yeah, that, that I don't know specifically how, what was their total timeframe, you know, start to finish, who they had out there that full-time, how many men were on the crew working, or persons were on the crew working, I'm assuming some of that's gonna include the prep work and preparation of the estimates, ordering materials, reviewing those, you know, reviewing those submittals, and getting the proper equipment ordered ahead of time prior to the work actually beginning in the field for that three-week period there in mid-September till through October 8. You know, in scrutinizing what was provided to us originally, we did receive the estimate from RCI, and that was what was submitted to you as the backup, as far as what they thought this project was going to take, start to finish, with both materials, labor, you know, they included their labor rates, overhead profit, tools, materials, all that type of good stuff, and as you pointed out, it adds up to $85,000, that was reviewed with him, not by me personally, but by the department, and he was put to work under that emergency service type scenario to, to get that line replaced.
Okay, so with, so with the timeframe that you're laying out here, that you previously, that you started off by laying out, you're saying that there was no amount of time in that, that three weeks to bring this before council to give us a heads-up in regards to an $85,000 bill? There's just a lot of stuff, I mean, I, I, I'm not lobbing accusations anywhere, I'll tell you, the way this sits now, I won't be voting yes, and it's, I take no joy in doing so, but there's something about this that doesn't make sense, and, you know, it was an issue last week, and the answers that are being brought to us tonight, I mean, you're giving us information, but it's not the information that is helpful. You know, there might be a perfectly reasonable explanation that kind of details the hours, this many people were on the job, this, we're not getting that, it's still a broad number. You're, you're thinking that some of these hours are because of, you know, the ordering, the planning, this and that, you know, that's different from having a licensed electrician on the job, too, you know what I mean? It's, the people ordering things are not necessarily licensed electricians who build out, or billing $75 an hour. So listen, I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, at this point, I don't feel comfortable with it, I'll be voting no, and again, I take no pride in doing so, but this is, this is our job up here, and it's where the cards are currently, thank you.
Vice President Barr?
So Jacob, I, you may have addressed this, but I just want to clarify, you, you don't know how many people were out there working?
Yeah, you know, unfortunately...
Because that's really the key point, I mean...
I did not get that information from, from RCI, even in the email he sent to me at 8 o'clock yesterday evening, it did not include that specific answer, and I do see that was something that was asked of him, unfortunately, we didn't get that response from him specifically, I got a real nice description of the work that was done, and what all went into it, but I do not have an answer for that, unfortunately, I did invite them to this meeting, they were not able to attend, you know, and that's nothing I can do there.
When did, I just, I'm not, I'm not trying to play sleuth here, I just have to ask, when, when did you guys ask them for that information? You said he hadn't responded, when did you guys ask for it? I mean, because we had our meeting a week and a half ago, and I'm, I'm just trying to determine, are they, yeah, I'll just leave the question at that.
Yeah, let me see.
I think it was a week and a half ago, right? Last Monday, right?
Yeah.
It was requested of him on Tuesday, the 23rd.
Okay, so it was, so they haven't gotten back to you, they're not here tonight, we don't know how many people are, I mean, because I agree, I have the same concern Mr. Jolly has, the thing that could maybe help understand that is understanding how many people are out there, because we're talking man-hours here, but, I mean, that's a really, really simple question, and the fact that they haven't responded to you, and you've asked them to be here tonight, and they're not here tonight, that's really concerning to me. Also, one other thing I want to understand, you said what we have here in front of us was the estimate that was given to you, I see it's dated November 30.
I think that was, that was his print date.
Oh, that's a print date, okay.
The bid date, if you, on the first sheet, does say September 1.
I see that, I do see that now, thanks for pointing that out, so, forgive my ignorance, but was this bid against other companies?
No, it was not, so this was done... No, it was not. So, this was done under the agreement with RCI that we have that was, that was bid out previously. And I'll have to look at the exact data that I do have that here somewhere. 2018 Council Resolution 127-18 for contractual services with RCI for electrical work.
Okay, so we have them on, an ongoing agreement on certain rates?
Correct.
Okay. So, so, yeah, the question really does just come down to understanding the calculation of the man-hours, and it is concerning that they're not here. What, if, if we don't approve this tonight, what is, I mean, obviously, work's been done. I understand money needs to be paid. But what, what happens if we don't approve this tonight?
I mean, obviously, you know, you not approving it, I don't know if, I don't know if, you know, if a no vote is the way the council would want to proceed, or maybe proceed to table the motion to a later period when we can have RCI here present to answer some of those questions, or provide us with the information that we had asked through, or through, from the council through DPW to RCI for that additional information.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd rather, I think I'd rather do that than send it to committee, frankly. And I'm gonna ask that we table this toward, to a meeting sometime in the new year. Do I need to offer a motion for that? I, I know there's a motion on the table, but I guess...
I was gonna give it.
Okay, I'll stop. Yeah, no, please.
Yeah. Madam President, thank you. Sorry. I was, Mr. Rushlow, there's a lot of questions surrounding this. I made an approving. As we do a deeper dive on this, there's, my colleagues and myself are starting to have a few questions. And in order to give you time, and, and the department a little bit more time, I would ask that maybe we delay this. Our last meeting's the 13th. That's only a regular meeting. Yeah, so, it's up to the president, what she would, if you want that, or, you know, Jim's gonna be president in January, you know, whoever wants to take it. But I'll withdraw my motion, and I'd like to move it so that they do get paid if indeed we come to that decision this year, if possible.
We don't have another study meeting this year.
Right. So, it'd have to be a next item? Possibly, or?
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
UK Councilman Choi, if I...
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I, I'd ask that we just take this up in the new year. And I'm not gonna be shy about my motive. We all have a desire to keep our next meeting as simple as possible. And, I mean, they've had, they've had ample opportunity to be here. And I don't feel a lot of urgency to deal with this next week, or two weeks, whenever it is. I, I think we take it up in January. So...
I think Councilmember McCullough, you had your hand up to speak. Did you?
I guess just some of the, the items that I wrote notes down for is, usually when, there's different things. Obviously, you could either have an exact estimate or proposal for the specific work, whether it's underground, right? Or you guys could use time and materials based on the electrical services contract. But I'm sure in that document, any contractor's gonna provide work tickets, daily work tickets, that are gonna show hours breakdown. RCI is included. I've worked with them in the past. They do the same thing. So, I think that, you know, from what it looks like, you know, you've got Division One Raceway Fittings and Boxes, Division Two is Wire and Cable, Number Six is Underground and Site, and this is where they're breaking up their labor hours. Raceway Fittings and Boxes, I mean, this is a main power supply. Obviously, we know that a lot of the materials are gonna be copper, and we know that's super expensive, and that's why you're getting close to $50,000 on that. However, you know, there's just a lot of holes in this. I mean, in one aspect, they charged the city sales tax, which we know we are exempt from that. You know, to me, it, at least from my vantage point, it looks like this was, you know, an afterthought that we had in original. If, there's gotta be daily work tickets. And I think that that would be more advantageous to look at, to make sure that it jives with everything, because some of the prices are, you know, if you look at the one, under the, the line item of journeyman and apprentice, you've got your base rate at $44 and $38.20, and then you have a burden that's added to it. I'd like to make sure that those jive, and I'm assuming that those are gonna jive with the electrical services contract. And then there's gonna be, I'm sure, material markups, whether it's 5%. That should all go based on our, the RFP that went out. I'm sure it does. So, I, I think that RCI needs to come back to the table, you know, laying out the 500-page documents that are usually part of contract negotiations. So, I would agree with my colleagues that even tabling it until we have more information. I definitely think, obviously, the work was needed, and, you know, something that was on an emergency basis. But, yeah, being fiscally responsible, this is just, it's, it's, something's not adding up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. To Mr. McCullough's question, I was gonna ask, what does that burden number mean? Is that supposed to be an emergency surcharge of some sort, because this was an emergency? However, if it took a month, I don't necessarily know if it becomes an emergency or not. So, I wanted to know if there was some sort of emergency markup, and try to understand this bid summary. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I, I actually do not know the answer to that question. I apologize. I'm, I'm not familiar with, with that.
Just, burden usually is for overhead and profit, but they also line that up in one of the documents, too. They have their 6.23% of profit that's been added. So, burden is usually over.
Councilmember Choi?
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask that we delay this, if you will. I'm gonna withdraw my motion if the supporter would like to also...
I concur.
Okay. Actually, you have to call. But that's okay. You, you should, you would call that, not me. But that's okay. I just want to make sure that he would want to... Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. But, but I would, I would refer this to next year and let Council President decide when he would like to do that.
So, what, what we, what we could do, instead of tabling it, since we don't have a date certain?
Right.
We could remove this item from the agenda, and then it will be up to Council President Jolly to work with, well, actually, for Sarah, to work with DPW and Councilmember Jolly to put this on an agenda in the new year. So, would you like to make a motion that we withdraw, that we remove this item from the agenda?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Do we have support?
Support.
Okay. Was it tie?
Kathy.
It was Kathy. We'll give it to Kathy. And is there any discussion on, who else had a hand up to talk on this? I'm losing track. Councilmember Jolly?
Just by way of direction to DPW, I'm gonna rely upon you to bring this to me when it's ready, and you have the sufficient information. So, when you do so, contact Sarah, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
Excuse me. Was that Jim's first official duty? Just joking around. Sorry. Okay.
He'll have his official, first official duty sometime after midnight on January 1st.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, he can get right on this at 12:01. All right.
Happy New Year, Jim.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, if there's none, Ms. Miller, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Choi?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
And President McIntyre?
Aye. And the motion carries, and so this is removed from the agenda, and it will be up to DPW, Mr. Rushlow, to work with Sarah and Council, incoming Council President Jolly, on getting this on the agenda in 2022. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right, we have no new business. We would go back to the audience. We have no one here. But I did find what I was looking for on the Livonia Public School page. It was right in front of me on the homepage, which, again, now I've, I've lost it again. If you go to the Livonia, if you go to Livonia homepage, which is Livonia Public Schools, all one word, dot org, there's a, in the left-hand, kind of the upper-left-hand corner, right under Points of Pride, there's a message to the community from the superintendent there. And I would encourage everyone to read it. They talk about a confidential tip-line that runs in the state, okay to say. And then there's an attachment with some resources for talking to your children and other information. So, I apologize that I couldn't find it. It was right in front of me, exactly where Superintendent O'Quinn told me it would be. We don't have, we don't need a motion to suspend the rules. And with that...
Move to adjourn.
Support?
Support from Vice President Barr. I think we can safely show seven on that. And we are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 8:00 PM for the study meeting. Thank you.